All right, we'll call to order the Planning Commission meeting of Thursday, April 17th, 2025. If we can start with roll call, please.
Roll call, we're gonna have Chair Dennison.
Here.
Vice Chair Simcock.
Here.
Commissioner Brennan.
Here.
Commissioner Moran.
Here.
Commissioner Yu.
Here.
Chair Dennison, you have come to the business.
Thank you. Next up is an approval of the agenda. Look for an approval, or...
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next, we have the approval of minutes of March 6th, 2025. Does anybody have any edits, updates, corrections, changes they'd like to see? Hearing none. I would ask for a motion to approve as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions?
I abstain, there wasn't enough here.
All right, thank you, motion carries. Next up is the approval of minutes of March 20th, 2025. Any updates, changes, recommended edits? Hearing none. I will look for a motion to approve as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve as presented. Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
One abstention.
Like I got my meetings mixed up, the ones that I missed, so I'll abstain from this one.
Okay, we still have enough to, so that's, that's fine. Motion carries. Next up is the Council liaison report. Seeing no council members, we will move on to community input. At this time, any person may address the Planning Commission concerning an item that is not on the agenda. The Commission welcomes your attendance and participation. When addressing the Commission, please begin by providing your name and address for the record. Please keep comments to no more than three minutes to assure an orderly and timely meeting. Hearing no comments, we will move on. First order of business is a discussion on the noise ordinance update. Does staff have a presentation?
Yes, we do have a presentation and it will be delivered by our Assistant Planner, Huang.
Great.
Timeout.
Technical difficulties.
Thank you for waiting, Planning Commissioners. Good evening. Tonight, the Commission will be conducting a discussion for the noise ordinance update. So sorry, some technical difficulties. So, some, providing some background. The purpose of the noise ordinance is to protect the residents of Sierra Madre from excessive, unnecessary, and unreasonable noises from all sources in the community. Some gaps that were identified in the existing ordinance would include standards for measuring noise levels for different land uses, no baseline for specifying ambient noise levels, and does not include vibration as a factor of noise or sound level. The noise ordinance was last amended in 2009, imposing hours of operation for leaf blowers. And in 2023, the City Council had directed staff to draft an amendment to update the noise ordinance. Providing a brief series of events in 2023. On June 1st, the Planning Commission conducted a public hearing recommending that the city adopt ordinance 1467 for the noise ordinance, deferring sections of the ordinance for consideration by City Council or the Natural Resources Commission. On June 28th, the Natural Resources Commission deferred the regulation of noise generated by gas-powered leaf blowers and other garden equipment to the City Council. And during this duration of time, staff had paused the ordinance for, ordinance 1467 to address the gas-powered leaf blowers and other landscaping equipment through ordinance 1469. And then November 5th, the Natural Resources Commission recommended City Council adopt this ordinance considering air quality health instead of the noise levels. And following that, March 12th, City Council had adopted that ordinance. And following that, they also asked that Planning Commission reconsider the noise ordinance update. And with that, the city had resumed efforts for the noise ordinance update and released an RFP for consulting services to prepare amendments for the ordinance. And with that, we've contracted with Ringcon Consultants Incorporated, where they have identified the areas of improvement in the existing ordinance. That includes enforceable noise standards based on zone area, noise limits in various land uses, clarification to definitions. And to continue their analysis, Ringcon has collected and analyzed existing noise and vibration data, reviewed successful noise ordinances and regulations in the region, developed clear noise limits and level metrics, and provided clarification to those definitions. With the outcome and using the information, they've drafted noise level guidelines tailored to the city and also provided the amendments to the existing ordinance. In the updated ordinance, the proposed amendments can be identified in these following sections for declaration of policy, definitions, exterior noise standards, exemptions, motor-driven vehicles, exception permits, renaming the general noise regulations to prohibited noises, level, noise level measurement criteria and vibration. And if any of the audience or viewers at home would like to follow along with the drafted amendments, you can scan the QR code and it will take you to a document PDF with the updated amendments. And to go over the drafted amendments, we have Bill Vostie from Ringcon helping us provide the presentation for the, for the sections updated.
Great, thank you for having me. My name is Bill Vostie. I work for Ringcon Consultants. I'm Program Manager for the noise team there. And so, we've been working with the Planning Department to update and modernize the noise standards for, for the city in the municipal code with the goals of, you know, making it easier to understand for code enforcement, easier to understand for the planners, and hopefully easier to understand for the citizens as well as to what the standards are, and also to make them, you know, standards that are, can be enforced by code enforcement and to help, you know, regulate noise in terms of there's, you know, complaints or issues and things like that. So I'll go over the updates kind of generally. I'll focus on maybe some of the bigger ticket updates as well. And, you know, if there's any noise terms or whatever that is confusing, you know, please let me know. Noise is, there's a lot of terminology in our industry and it can be quite confusing, you know, even to me with, you know, 10-plus years' experience. So feel free to, to let me know. But the, so the first part that's updated is the definitions. And this is just, you know, making the definitions because we have some new language in there that might reference different terms than what have in there before. So that's basically where you might have new definitions. Next slide, please. And then the, the next section, so exterior noise standards. So this is probably the, the biggest update or the most important update. And this is where before the language had said, you know, no person shall produce noise that's six decibels above ambient at a residential. Or, no person shall make it eight decibels above ambient at a commercial. And those can be difficult to enforce because the question is, well, what's the ambient? What does that mean? You know, does that mean somebody from code enforcement has to go out there and measure what the ambient is? Or, you know, even if you're looking at something like Sequa and you're looking, trying to analyze a noise impact, you know, how do you know what the ambient is? So what we have added is this table that basically, these noise levels here are kind of, you could think of them as a presumed ambient noise level. These are the typical noise levels for those type of land uses and where, when you start to go above these numbers, where you might find that those land uses would find a disturbance. And these tables, these are very common throughout other cities, there are noise ordinances. Some of the ones we've worked on recently, Huntington Beach, Lake Forest. Pretty much a lot of cities have a table similar to this. And so, as you can see, they're split between land uses. And then within residential itself, it's split between daytime and nighttime because your nighttime standards are always gonna be a little lower because that's obviously when people are sleeping and that's when, you know, the disturbance can be greatest when you disturb people's sleep. And so, yeah, just real quick, so like, you know, so residential 60 during the daytime, commercial's a little higher, 50 at nighttime. And that'll give some context for the next slide, which, you go to the next slide now. So this is just for some context of what these noise levels are. This comes from a Caltrans, the Caltrans noise document, you know, Caltrans. They, they've done a lot of scientific noise studies because it's a very common thing they have to deal with since they build, you know, new broadways and stuff like that. So this is just kind of a general guide. But what you could see here is, for example, you know, a rock band, 110 decibels. That's probably you're standing next to the speaker at a Metallica concert, very, very loud. That would blow out your eardrums kind of thing. But then you go down further and where a noisy urban area during the daytime is maybe 70, 75. So that's probably like downtown LA, kind of, you're standing there on the street. You move lower where there is, so maybe like 40 decibels, quiet urban nighttime, quiet suburban nighttime. So that's kind of the range you're looking at. An important one here, I think, is right above 60 is normal speech at three feet. So, and there's other studies that show when people talk to each other, it's kind of like 60 decibels within, you know. When I talk to you, you're three feet away, I'm making 60 decibels to you. So that's why, like, say the residential daytime is at 60. When you start to go above that, you will start disrupting speech. If I'm trying to talk to you in a regular voice and it's 70 decibels, you're not gonna be able to hear me, kind of thing. So that's kind of where a lot of this noise theory is based, is people talking, like that's kind of 60 is a good residential limit to have. Next slide. So there's some further updates to the ordinance. These specific, each of these specific sections have a variety of different updates. I think for the exemptions, we're gonna jump to the specific text, it'll be a little easier to describe the updates. So in these ordinances, exemptions are often kind of like your more unique noise sources, like how do you deal with them? How do you, how do we address them? And so here, so some of the additions here, so some of this stuff was in there previously and we've just adjusted some words, some of it's brand new. The first one, activities such as school bands, school athletics, school entertainment events would be exempt from those limits. For emergencies, that, that language was in there reformed, some of the text has been modified slightly. For construction, one thing we wanted to add here is the last sentence is new, or it's, it's slightly adjusted to represent 80 decibels over an eight-hour period. That's, comes from the Federal Transit Administration, so kind of, you know, Caltrans on the federal level. They've studied noise a lot as well, and this is the limit that they use and it's a very common noise limit that we use in the industry. We were involved helping update, the City of Los Angeles updated their construction noise thresholds last year. And this is what was settled on. It was a bunch of consultants kind of helping them, but this is kind of a... Most construction activities will be caught underneath this limit. If you're really egregious, you might exceed that and that's kind of where that number comes from. The next one, the powered equipment. That's where the, it's been expanded a little bit to, this was just the leaf blower language. And so it's kind of been expanded a little bit to kind of capture more of these mechanical equipment that can be used for these, you know, maintenance. And this is saying that between certain hours, you can't be using this type of equipment, which is the obvious hours of, you know, you can't be making this noise during the nighttime. So this part was just clarified to add some additional types of uses beyond just a leaf blower. And then so, bullet E here, special events, so we've updated this one quite a bit. And what we're trying to capture here is there's special events that go on in the city and trying to encompass that those events could potentially generate higher noise levels because of their nature of what they are. And so, it's providing potentially a higher noise limit here of 70 decibels if they're during the daytime, but also that, yeah. And also the potential for an exemption, which is described in the later sections there. Also here, we, if there's gonna be amplified sound generated from a live band, DJ, or other amplified music, we also have a criteria for DBC. And so, without going too much into the noise weeds, most is measured in DBA. The DBA is what humans hear. DBC captures more of the low frequency that we can't hear, which is where bass comes in. So this is meant to try to quantify, you know, how the, if you're making music with a lot of bass, it will show up when you're measuring DBC. So that's, that's why that addition is in there. And I think these last two bullets are just kind of standard, standard language in these codes. There's nothing too, I think, unique about these. And then, I guess we might as well just stay in the ordinance for the rest of these.
Do you want questions as we go, or do you wanna take them at the end?
I guess, what would you prefer? It could be either. We could do questions now if that helps.
Okay. I'm very thankful that we added the DBC criteria because there's no way for us to measure with DBA the bass section. As you identified early on and corrected most of the code for, you say not to use a relative factor, but to use a flat factor. In other words, don't say above ambient, but in the DBC code, it says
Yeah.
two DBC above ambient. So how do we reconcile that?
Yeah, that's, that's a good point. I think where that comes from is that the science behind DBA and what are typical DBA limits and things like that is very well understood, such as the 60 decibels, you know, being where people talk, things like that. And so, we're able to establish a table because there's a lot of, to back that up as to where those numbers come from, what's historically been used by other cities and things like that. DBC, that data isn't quite as extensive where, if I put that same table and just said this also applies to DBC, it might not really be representative of, that 60 decibels in DBA might not really represent well as 60 decibels in DBC. Because that DBC is really focusing on these lower frequencies where DBA is meant for humans and kind of what we hear, so it kind of takes out those low frequencies. So that's why that's kind of focused on an increase over ambient. How that would be enforced would be, so somebody, if code enforcement goes out there, they would need to take a reading, say before the event started, to understand what the ambient DBC is. And then when the event starts, they can compare to that. So the way it was written before, you know, having the ambient, only the ambient, that can be done and that's, that is a method. We think having those baselines in your code is best. But for DBC, that data isn't really there for us to put that in at, you know, before. So it, I think it does cause some extra work when you are monitoring these live bands, DJs. But it's just kind of that unique sound, to capture that unique bass, you kind of need to perhaps do that.
And are the ANSI sound meters that are required, that you're proposing to require by code, are those two separate sound meters, one for DBA and one for DBC, so they'd have to have two?
Well, no, they're not separate meters. It's a simple switch or a simple setting to go from one to the other. There might be a situation where you might want to be measuring the DBA and the DBC from an event at the same time. And you would, if you wanted to have those measurements at the same time, you would have to have two meters just because it can't record DBC and DBA at the same time on one meter.
Okay. And I believe the way the code is written is that there has to be 15 minutes of it in order for it to be an infraction.
Like a constant for 15?
Well, we'll work with our Deputy City Attorney when we get to that part of it to figure out how to wordsmith that, because I think it's...
Is the 15 minutes too long, you think, or?
What's the standard? I mean, what?
So, 15 minutes. So somewhere, some of this, where this comes from, is a lot of, it goes back to Caltrans usually too. And they, so for example, when Caltrans says, hey, when you're going out there to measure an environment, try to make it 10 to 30 minutes. In our industry, the standard often is just, is to do 15 to kind of settle on that. I would say that it gets much more subjective though. For example, if you're running machinery at the same level, I mean, if you're there for a couple of minutes, you'd have a good idea of what that noise level is. But if you're measuring an event and you wanna see what it is over an hour, there's gonna be peaks and troughs and that kind of thing, so maybe you wanna measure it longer. I think this language can be, you know, changed further to, to something else if 15 minutes just feels like something that wouldn't be applicable or, you know, would cause difficulties.
I think it's just more clarification on what 15 minutes means. Like, I don't, I don't know what 15 minutes means.
So it means taking, so say I...
You take a reading for 15 minutes, but does that mean that it reaches this level 10%, 1%? 90% of the time you're, you're violating, or?
No, so it's DBA LEQ. The LEQ basically means your time average noise level. So over that 15 minutes, the average noise level is above 60, then that's where I would call out a violation.
How do you, how, does a typical, I have a DBA, I have a DB meter at home. I don't think I have a 15-minute setting on mine. Does a, does a typical, do you just, does somebody just stand there and hold it for 15 minutes?
Yeah.
And it calculates it itself?
Sorry?
How is it calculated, the?
Well, so, a lot of meters, a typical meter, like that we would use in our field, they're called a type 2. There's the ANSI type 2, type 1s. The type 1s are the most accurate, but type 2 is what most people use. They're slightly less accurate than type 1, but they're considered, you know, good for, good enough for fieldwork and things. Those will have settings to, you could do it a couple of different ways. Some, most meters, you could just let it run. So I just let it run, after 10, 10, 5, 10 minutes, 30 minutes, I could stop it and it will give me the average for that time I did it. Or it will have common time lengths, like a five-minute setting, 15-minute setting. So you could just, you hit it, you come back, you come back half an hour later and it stopped at 15 minutes, kind of thing.
Okay.
They should all have that setting to give you that time average noise level.
Okay. So I guess, if I'm understanding what you're saying correctly, if we know in advance somebody has the potential to cause an infraction of DBC, we can go and collect an ambient reading. But if my neighbor throws a party and has the bass pumping, I won't be able to get that ambient, so I couldn't, as the code's written, find an infraction.
You could, I, I, yeah, in the moment, as it's written, you, you wouldn't be able to make that call. You would...
I only know this because we went through this when we referred it to you guys.
I mean, if, it could be, you know, if this is, are you talking about, you wanna make that call right there? Hey, you're, you're exceeding it right now, shut it off. Because you could always, after it's over, then measure it and if you come back to them and say, you guys were over. But I, I don't know, is that...
And then police, then PD would write the misdemeanor infraction for them, rather than... So you have to suffer through it, wait till you get ambient. And then, I, because I'm just thinking, if I'm a neighbor, right?
Right.
So that, that's the challenge with...
Yeah, no, I see what you're saying.
Just, just food for thought.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm thinking...
There may be some recommendations that we'll come back and ask you to look more at.
Yeah, well definitely, I'll take a, take a deeper look into it. You know, the difficulty is that DBC does have less, you know, just less data on it.
Yeah.
But I totally get how that would be, can't do it. Obviously, you could switch to DBA in that situation if the party is too loud. You know, you'll be able to get them on that. If it's the base...
DBA, as you, as you have mentioned, has great research and I think that, that these levels are great and they're, they're really well thought out. We've heard, subsequent to all of that part of the conversation, that the DBC, that rattling, that vibration that neighbors feel from the bass that doesn't trigger a DBA but does trigger a DBC reaction is, is one of the challenges that we need to solve for.
Yeah.
And I think the code even had some stuff about visibly seeing things shake in the house and vibrate.
Okay, it's, it gets more complicated. And there is a vibration section below, which actually is different than DBC. Because, so DBC is, is sound and that's just accommodating these frequencies where these bass sound waves move. Vibration is where those sound waves get into the ground or a structure and shake it, you know, like an earthquake, which, you know, I was in San Diego a few days ago, we had a really big earthquake. It shook my house really good and that's what's, that's shaking the house, is the vibration. So that's ground-borne vibration. Then there's something called ground-borne noise, which is in the same category, and that's where something shakes and you hear that. That shaking is giving off a noise, like the plates in your kitchen during an earthquake or something. And so we have a section below for vibration. It's, 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 it's difficult to, the vibration standards we have in here, this would be difficult to capture this specific music bass issue. And that's kind of why we, to, to this DBC, we based that language off. My coworker had worked in the City of San Francisco and they have a noise ordinance there and they had added this DBC language, this eight decibels above ambient. there, and they had added this DBC language, this 8 decibels above ambient, because they had some of these issues where this, you know, these amplified music was causing issues between businesses. So I don't know if, so the vibration's at the bottom, so I don't know if we want to jump to that.
Sounds like we're there. Let's go.
Okay. So let's go discuss vibration now.
Can I just ask a question about some other stuff before we get to there, then? On slide seven, the two charts regarding residential schools, hospitals, and all that, can you just talk me through, for example, why schools would be 55 versus residential at a regular time period would be 60? And, I mean, makes sense, commercial, 65, more people, lots, lots going on, even hospitals, 60. Just, can you walk me through that?
Yeah. It's based upon, like, the learning environment of a school and the, the sort of data that shows where a school may be disrupted, the learning environment is just a little bit lower than a residential, so.
It's more of a sensitivity, not that they're making the noise.
Yeah. So this is all, so, okay, that's a good point.
Got it, got it, got it.
So this table is about...
It's not what you can produce, it's what you are not supposed to have.
Exactly. And so that's a good, I should expand on that, because we get questions about that a lot. So this table is about the receiving land use, the noise, and so these limits here are for, if you're next door to this land use, this is what you can make noise to that land use, like the limits for you to do that. So if I live next door to a school and I have a, you know, a commercial workshop or something, I would, by the way this ordinance is written, during the daytime, not be able to generate noise 55 decibels or above, or above 55 decibels at them, at their use, at And so if you are, say, a commercial use, generating noise to a residential, you would be, at that residence, you would be subject to the 60 decibels, not the 65 listed here. Because that's, 65 is if a commercial is generating noise to another commercial. So it's, yeah. So just to be clear, that's not like, if you're a commercial, you could generate all, you know, 65 to a school or residential, that's not what it's saying.
Can we add something to this slide or something that describes what the noise factors are supposed to be? It's on the receiving side of it?
I think it's in the code.
Okay. Because I can see someone just taking this thing, like, boom, like, ah, you know, it's over this day.
Yeah, there's a...
Yeah, very easily.
Yeah, there's a, and F underneath the table footnote F, it says, you know, "In the event the noise source and affected property are within different land use categories, the noise standards of the affected property shall apply."
On the code?
Yeah, on the code, but...
This table is just for us.
It's not in the code?
Okay. The table's in the code.
Oh, oh, okay.
But in the code is this section that says...
Right below the chart?
Yeah. Those are all detailing items about the chart.
Okay.
Affected problem.
And then, yeah, so maybe we should talk about the...
Is that common that, that we're, hmm, to me, when I'm looking at a chart that says, you know, residential and everything, it's what you can, you can make. And that's why we would have maybe a little bit higher for, you know, I don't know, a commercial use. But what's acceptable for, so if I live next door to a commercial building, I can make more noise than the residents that can live next to a residence. That does, that seems backwards to me.
Well, you make more noise to that commercial property because they have a typically, they're exposed to higher noise levels typically, they can function with higher noise levels.
But they don't typically produce higher noise levels?
But if you hear that residence making that 65 to that commercial, I mean, if you live next, on the other side is another residence, and you're making 65 to both of them, I mean, you're in violation because of that residence.
Right. But so, but if I'm a commercial, if I'm a commercial building with a commercial building on one side and a residence on the other, I can only make 55?
To that residence.
60.
To the, or 60.
The noise applies to the property of that receiving land use, right? So if you're a commercial use, you're making 65, but by the time it gets to the property line, it's 55.
Right. So it's a threshold of annoyance, not a threshold of generation?
Receipt, I think, could be the word.
Right. Receipt. Yeah, sorry.
Receipt, how much noise you're receiving.
Those levels represent where that receiving land use is being disturbed to a, you know, annoying a level.
Right. Okay.
Okay. Okay. We'll do the, we'll go in order...
Wherever you want. Sorry to disrupt.
Yeah. We'll, we'll, we'll go in order, and then I'm sure we get to vibration, and we could talk, we kind of clarify that a little more. So motor-driven vehicles, so this language was already in here for the most part. Some of those later sentences have been added just to clarify more specifically, specific, you know, situations and things like that. Motorcycles and specific, yeah, things like that. So basically, those, I think those last two sentences are new, but it was, this section was in there before. And then, so exception permits. So this, there was exception language in there previously, but it was about a paragraph-long, and it didn't necessarily have the details, I think, that the city needed or wanted to, you know, be able to make these exception permits. So again, this, without kind of going into details necessarily of reading all of it, this is language used by other cities, pretty common in terms of like the different ways that you would make the exception. That prohibited noises section was already in there. And then for this, the noise level measurement criteria, so this was added to provide clarification on how this should be measured by, you know, code enforcement. And, you know, this is in here just because, like, your phone has a DB meter, there's apps to like look on your phone, and it's kind of generally there, but it's not calibrated scientifically to, you know, for like, at the legal standard. And so that's why there's discussion here of these ANSI meters, the type 2 meters, that's, you know, what we use at my firm when we're going out to measure. And so it's just kind of clarifying that. And then there's, it goes into more details about, you know, using a slow meter response and things like that. Those are just settings. They're not fancy meters, they're not special meters or anything. It's just so that there's consistency when these are, somebody's going out there and measuring. But this is also where it says, you know, 15 minutes, so I don't know if we want to discuss that more now, or if there's any, you know, thoughts about what you might like to see there.
So we listen to what you have to report, and then we deliberate after public comment. So that's probably when we'll...
Okay.
And if we have any further questions, we'll call you up at that.
Okay. Sounds good. Yeah. And then, so vibration, so we actually, we were discussing this, you know, via email this week, and I think this language will be updated. As it's written here, it's a little bit, you know, it's more about how, what somebody is perceiving. It doesn't have a quantified limit. And so that's, this is one way to do it, where it's, you know, going to be kind of up to the, the officer, the code enforcement to determine, okay, this is distinctly perceptible, this is causing a disturbance. There's also, the limit that we propose in the, in our latest text is at 72 vibration decibels. So vibration decibels, it's just, it's a way to measure vibration in a, in a decibel unit. And we have 72 in there, and that's, again, that comes from the FTA, because they do a lot of railroads, and so it's kind of, comes from this, these railroad studies and things like that. But that's kind of where residences start to get disturbed, is when you're above 72. And then I think we have that chart. So again, there's another chart here, just to kind of put into context what these different vibration levels mean. But you can see, you know, it's about 80 decibels. You have residential annoyance in frequent events, so that's commuter rail, residential annoyance at about 72, and that's for frequent events. So that's kind of like, you know, once you get above 70, that's maybe where you start to have, that's, if you can imagine, a vibration level of being, you know, close to a train in a building, close to a train, or something like that. The most likely source of vibration, really, is probably from construction equipment, which can, you know, if it's, if it's a bulldozer or a vibrating roller and it's close to your house, it would probably be in the 70s or 80s kind of thing. And that might be an annoying level to the person living there. Okay, I think, go back to the code.
For the vibration reading, can you speak to how accessible the meters for that reading are?
Yeah. So there are vibration, there's meters specifically for vibration. They're operated similar to a noise meter. Typically, you know, if you're asking, well, does, should the city invest and buy one? I think the situations that come up, it would typically, I, I see more cities where they would, might rent one. I realize this might cause, if you're trying to go out there in the moment to enforce the vibration, that could, obviously that causes some difficulties there. It's just that these vibration-specific issues, we find, don't come up too often. And as we mentioned, you know, if the, if there's a consistent issue with music noise and the bass it's providing, it's not really something that you would capture under these vibration meters or this vibration code. It's just, it's not generating, it's not like this, a bulldozer going by your house, just going to shake your house like an earthquake perhaps. Where, we were talking about bass, it's more like maybe rattling the windows and kind of just annoying you. And it's, it's just kind of a different, different thing that's better captured under that DBC metric we mentioned earlier.
What's vibration-sensitive land use?
Yeah. I think, define that. I mean, it's, it's basically very similar to noise-sensitive land uses, so a residence, residential is something that would be disturbed by high vibration. Yeah. So there's, in the definitions, you know, it's residential hotels, motels, schools, hospitals, kind of places where, you know, I guess you can imagine if it's, it's very noisy, it might disturb what you're doing, or very, if a vibration is coming through, it could disturb what you're doing. So that's where that language comes from.
But it's well-defined later.
Yeah. And then, so, for example, like outdoor areas, not vibration-sensitive even, like a park, because the vibration doesn't really bug you at a park. You can, again, imagine maybe like an earthquake scenario. If you're inside a house, it's going to be shaking the house and making a lot of noise and being very disturbing. If you're in a field, it doesn't really make that sort of vibration and that, that noise coming through the vibration. I think that's it for the updates after vibration. Yeah. Those, the violation sections that was in there before.
I have a few questions before you leave.
Okay.
Okay? So just to, thanks for the updates, it was really good. Just a few questions. So you, you mentioned, I just wanted to ask specifically, you mentioned in this, in sort of the memorandum that you, obviously, were looking at different cities and surveys and standards in the industry, the proposed levels that you proposed for us to the city of Sierra Madre. Would you say they were sort of in the median of what you see other cities doing from a best practice perspective? Were there any deviations that you'd like to call out at all?
No, they're, they're, I think, very in the median. I would say most cities have very similar standards to this. You might see some deviation, some, we come across some cities where it's like very restrictive. For example, a construction noise standard, sometimes you see like 60 decibels, which is like very restrictive. And like, actually, if that was actually enforced, you would like never have construction in your city. So like, there's codes like that, but that's why, you know, so I work mostly in SEQA, and I work, I've worked in like 100-plus cities, I've looked at 100-plus ordinances, and so I know how those ordinances speak to, you know, SEQA, or how they speak to code enforcement, that it really comes out in how these standards are updated here, in terms of like what's realistic, what, what's realistic to be enforced, what's realistic to be analyzed and understood. So I think that's, that's where a lot of this, this comes from.
Okay. A few other questions. So in the definitions, I think you had added simple tone noise, which looked pretty technical from a definition perspective, but can you just, I'm understanding that to be like a whistle tone, something that's got a consistent sort of frequency to it? Is it called out here separately because it's particularly annoying?
Yeah.
And how is it used later? I couldn't figure out exactly how it was used actually later in the, in the policy document.
Yeah. So good, yeah, good question. So under C, so under the exterior noise standard table, there's a table C. It calls out a few specific types of noise that is just found through, you know, studies and also just through experience to be particularly annoying. And that's impulsive noise, which is, like a hammering. Simple tones, like a whistle, or, yeah, just something that kind of stays at this, this level where it, it causes like a, you know, an annoyance. And also noise from sound-amplifying equipment. People tend to find that, because it's not like a, if you're hearing music, it's, it's not necessarily consistent, it's kind of up and down. And so this note here says that if that's the offensive noise, that you would reduce the noise levels by 5 dB. So for example, that 60 decibels for residential would be a 55 decibels if it's because of sound-amplifying equipment or impulsive noise. So we, this is, you find these in a lot of codes, just to try to capture some of those more annoying noise levels.
Okay. Now, so now, thank you for that. I just have a rudimentary question about how things, like how ambient versus, I guess I'll call it, some of these specific offending noises are measured? So just hang with me.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm in my, I'm in my R1 zone, and my ambient noise level is 50 dB. And according to the chart, right, if I, if I have an offending sound, that 60 dB is one of these readers, like these, am I, is it actually reading the highest, is it the confluence of noise? So I'm, I'm asking a basic question, but is it the confluence?
No, no, no.
Or is it, are all these things additive to create sort of an overall noise level?
So they, they, in theory, they're additive.
Yeah.
But noise levels are, it's, decibels are logarithmic.
Yeah.
So it's like earthquakes. So, you know, like a 7.0 on the Richter scale is way stronger than 5.0. 70 decibels has way more energy than 50 decibels. So if you're, you've got a meter, and there's something that's generating 60 decibels to the property, and maybe in the background, the, say that the vehicles going by are creating like a baseline of 50. That 60 just is so much louder, it's just over, all that information is...
Override.
It's measuring that, yeah. If they were both at 50, you know, so 50 decibels plus 50 decibels is 53 decibels, the way the, the math works. So yeah, you would, it would be very clear, I think, to a code enforcement, that this is what's doing it.
So generally, it's an overriding type of effect?
Yeah. If you, if you have a loud disturbing noise, it overpowers everything else.
And like you said, it's logarithmic, so going from 50 to 60 is something like three times, or roughly, is it?
Oh, it's, I think it's like a...
Four.
Double is 3 decibels.
Yeah.
Double's 3.
So it's more like 4 to 8.
Okay.
I forget that off the top of my head, but yeah, it's much, much louder.
This might be a topic for deliberation, but I think, I think enforcement generally, I don't, I don't think that's necessarily a question for speaker today, but I think enforcement's something I'd like to talk about.
Mm-hmm. I'm not practicing. Sorry, go ahead. Did you have a question?
No, I was, I was going to have some other questions about infraction.
So I do have a question. Everybody has a different hearing background. I sat in front of trumpets, so I don't hear as clearly as Claire, who played the piano. I'm making it up. So how noticeable is the difference between... So how noticeable is the difference between 50 to 55 decibels?
So yeah, uh, there's very, like rules of thumb in the noise industry, again, based off, you know, studies that have been done before. So a 3-decibel increase is considered barely perceptible. So basically, they did studies in labs, and they turned up the noise, and when it got up 3 decibels above where they started, people were like, oh, I, I can tell it's gone up. So, but that's just barely perceptible. Most, some people, probably if you are bad of hearing, you're not gonna hear that. 5 decibels is, I believe, distinctly perceptible in these studies. That's where pretty much everyone by 5-decibel increase has noticed it. And I believe a 10-decibel increase is what people call, like essentially, a doubling of noise. That's to perceive, it's more than a doubling of noise energy, but it's what a human being has perceived, like, oh, it's about twice as loud now.
Okay. Have you, do you have any experience with cities that rather than doing all these 5-decibel difference nuances, just put one number?
Yeah, yeah, no, it's, it's, that's common too.
Okay.
And if, you know, these are definitely malleable, if it's felt, you know, the specificity here, there is not gonna be helpful, you know.
I bet in really big cities, that makes a big difference, but, I mean, we're just, we're a, we're a small little town.
I mean, yeah, if, if it, the, uh, it's, the want is to keep it more simple, like, stuff like that, could, we could trim that stuff. It's not, net, it's not 100% needed to enforce noise levels within your city to where citizens are enjoying themselves.
And was part of your analysis of the time periods analyzed in conjunction with our existing uses? In other words, there's a commercial zone downtown, and the business out, the hours of operation for, say, the Buck, our local watering hole, is till 2:00 a.m. So are we saying that they are allowed to operate because it's a commercial area? Well, I guess it would be depend on where the recipients are.
Right.
But residential, so I guess we're saying that, yeah, I was looking at the table backwards.
Yeah, no, that's, yeah, I think that's a good, good clarification, yeah. So it would be, if they're generating noise to a residential, it would, they would have to, it would go up to the residential, it's nighttime in residence now, so the lower limit. I suppose if they were next to a bar, another bar, and they would, that 65 would be applicable. I don't imagine the bars would wanna tell on each other, but-
Right. Okay. Other questions? All right, I think that's what we have for you for now.
Okay.
Don't go anywhere.
Thank you, Mr. Vosse, for providing your elaboration, analysis, and the updated ordinance. So to continue this presentation, staff recommends the planning commission to review the draft update to the noise ordinance, discuss any topics of issue, reconsider amendments to the draft, and direct staff to schedule a public hearing. The planning commission may also direct staff to initiate a municipal Code text amendment for the purpose of resolving any existing issues in noise by amending the noise ordinance, or continue the discussion, optionally requesting staff provide additional information, or take any action in combination of the above, or take any action of their preference. And, um, thank you, Mr. Vosse. And I will be here and staff open for any questions or comments.
All right, thank you. Director Lynn, I think we'd like to hear on the enforcement side of this. Can you describe the enforcement, how enforcement happens for the noise ordinance?
Thank you for the question. So before this meeting, we met with our police chief, and also our coordinating coordinator for the film monitoring, and also for special events. Chief did brought up the question regarding enforcement, and something that he wanted the commission to discuss, not just the methods for enforcement, but also if it's not enforceable, then we can accept that too, and include that in the ordinance. For our community services coordinator, he mentioned he received complaints regarding noise around the sports court from elementary school, Sierra Madre Elementary School, and also from the middle school. And I think that, the chart that was explained by Mr. Vosse, the land use is the receiving side, so that actually relieve his concern regarding the noise. So the school should not generating more than what the residential property that's adjacent to them. So that, that should be okay. One other things that they asked was on the special events section, where the exemption is. They would like the commission to discuss whether that special event should only apply to the city-approved events, such as the Wisteria, Fourth of July, Mel Wilson Trail. Leave those carve out for the city-approved events or, or filming that has gone through this application process with community services department. And these special event does not include weddings.
So Director, can I just clarify something? So today, forgetting about these updates, but in today's situation, people, residents may either call the police department and maybe use some scenarios, so it's a, it's a loud party, my next-door neighbor, and it's 2 o'clock in the morning, and they're at 90 decibels, and everybody's getting driven crazy, so that's, that's one scenario. So I'll be, I'm calling the police department potentially. And you mentioned community services officer, right? So, so for special events, do, does, it wasn't clear to me on the website or how the process works, if, if I'm a resident in an R1, and I possibly have someone next to me that's running a home occupation business, home-based business, and their shop generates a consistent level of noise, as an example, do you ever have residents call the, is it the, is it the, there's a particular, the, the code enforcement officer, do they, does that person ever get complaints about persistent noise that occurs day over day over day from a particular source? Does that happen? Or is it intended to be that way? Wasn't clear.
So for coenforcement officer is usually during city, city hall-
Yeah.
-operating hour, and most of the complaint that he receive will be from constructions, mostly from one quarter, that the construction from the new development and also all the construction equipments, vehicles-
Yeah.
He received those. A lot of noise from residential area are reported to our police department after-
After hour.
Not here, so maybe when it comes back to us, one of the questions we can get answered is, when the last time in the history of the police department, somebody's been cited for a noise complaint? Or do you know that answer?
I don't.
Okay.
Maybe some process stuff too, is this sort of, they go and knock, and they give them a warning, and then is that kind of what happens, or, or do they just pull out the meter automatically, or what's, what's the process of that, I guess? You can ask.
Yeah, so for the police department, we'll have to defer this question to the chief. And for a coenforcement officer, is we usually go out and we issue a warning. And after the warning is not being corrected, then we, we go through the administrative citation process.
And how many of those a year get issued?
We haven't issued anything for noise-related.
Ever? That you are aware of?
Not, not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
So either the warning's working, or maybe something's not happening, or-
Stop, or we'll say stop again.
That's what happens at my house. I mean, honestly.
You're warned a lot?
No, not a lot, but what has happened, it's happened, and we just be quiet, and everybody goes on their day.
That's good.
Okay, are there other questions for staff, or should we?
Just a question. So currently, if, let's say, God forbid, we have a power outage in Sierra Madre, and somebody turns on their generator, right? So would that mean that as long as it's under 60, the generator's okay until 10:00 p.m., then it needs to get to 50, kind of idea? Is that how it works? The noise of the generator, or somebody calling, or?
I mean, my kid's not sleeping qualifies as an emergency, because their nightlight isn't on, so that's why I get to run my generator overnight.
That's the emergency.
Yeah, well, you got a machine that helps you breathe, right?
I think that's probably what that's intended for, but-
So is that under the exemption?
I think it's an emergency. Power's out.
Refrigerator content, is that an emergency? I'm just asking, because I'm sure that's probably something that would, could happen right here in Sierra Madre.
Yeah, so, like, our latest incident, where we had the Eaton fire and the windstorm, those emergency situation with the generator operating, those are all waived. And we received that as executive order from the state and county.
What if it's just a power outage in certain areas of the city?
I think what I'm hearing is the city has discretion over enforcement. Any other questions?
No questions.
All right. At this time, any person may address the planning commission concerning this specific agendized item. Commission welcomes your attendance and participation. When addressing the commission, please begin by providing your name and address for the record. Please keep comments to no more than three minutes to assure an orderly and timely meeting. Hearing done. We'll bring it back for deliberation. Maybe we'll take overall comments and then just start flipping pages and see if there's changes that people recommend? If anybody has any overarching comments, or if we wanna hop right into flipping pages?
I, I guess just one comment, I think, just speaking from a principles-based perspective, I think having objective measures is a good thing. If those objective measures are incredibly granular, maybe that's, that's not serving a greater good meeting, so I have to think about that. But, but I think for me, the enforcement, the practical implications of enforcement, I think objective measurable policy is terrific, but I'm struggling with how this is, is enforced on a, from a practical perspective, given city resources. So, but, but I, I think flipping pages is a good thing, but-
No, I think, I think it's a fair question, and I, I think, one of the ways that I tend to look at the codes that we write are that they are backstops for, there's not going to be a ton of enforcement, it may be a lot of knocking and asking people to turn their music down.
Be good neighbors.
Be good neighbors.
Yeah.
But when that doesn't work, then you have that code as a backstop to say, look, you're not doing any of this, and we're gonna have to cite you for it. So I think that-
Or-
Both, both are important, having objective standards.
And I, I agree 100%. I'm just trying to think about what it means specifically, and maybe, maybe that's not our job. I guess that's a question, is, is it, isn't, is the enforcement discussion here in the context of this document something that we should be debating or not? I don't know. We received a number of questions from the police department directed towards the planning commission, maybe we should be answering those, but anyway.
And, and I tend to think of the enforcement as not our problem.
Yeah.
Like budget problems, not our problem. Inside of the house, not our problem. Outside of the house, writing zoning, writing these kind of codes, so that that's the framework people can use, the enforcement is for other people to decide.
Yeah, and I, I would say, I wanted to put a nuance on your point, that the number is not only to be a backstop for people not being reasonable about their own noise generation, but also occasionally in our community, we have people maybe not being entirely reasonable in their complaints, like they may be saying, oh, my neighbor's, you know, leaf blower is like causing me to, to lose sleep, or whatever, and this is also a mechanism where we can kind of all be good neighbors to each other, both not overly complaining, and then complaining at the right amount when it really is an issue. So I think it comes both directions, having an objective standard, to also go to the people who are saying, oh, the wedding was way too loud, and like everyone's saying, I, I think it was kind of fine, like to be able to measure it potentially and say, hey, it was all right this time, but we'll get them when it isn't.
And in terms of writing the code, having it be as objective as possible is helpful, and it, the idea is that it alleviates burden on an enforcement officer, and having to use discretion, that it either is or it isn't a violation at that point.
Right. I, I, I'm 100% for, I, I don't, I don't wanna put much in here, that can't be easily enforced. And I think the DBA having a, a number instead of 8 over, that, that was horrific. It's almost unenforceable. So creating unenforceable law, I mean, doesn't make sense. I see the point of maybe adding something like, with the vibration chapter, which is, I, I read as the opposite of anything that's enforceable. It's something that looks, almost looks like another backstop, if we had some problem where, you know, it wasn't even a sound, it was a, a machine shaking the ground that was causing, you know, neighbors' shelves to rattle, we could look at. I, I, my other problem, but I think we, there's a way to take care of it, is a lot of this seems to be, as I mentioned earlier, what sound is received by somebody, and then some of it's written to what sound is generated. And that's a little confusing to me. I, I think it should all be one way or the other. I mean, we have different things through here, again, but as was mentioned, if it is sound received, I don't think we have the bottle shop complaining that the buccaneer is too loud. I don't think we have those types of problems in this little tiny town, or that a, a church is complaining because a neighbor is too loud. We can, I don't see the point for all those difference. I, I think a daytime and a nighttime personally would-
Yeah, simplify.
Take a lot of, yeah, unneeded stuff out.
So I have a technical question for expert, am I allowed to ask questions still now? Yeah. My question was, I, and this sort of relates to, to enforcement, but also it's just a curiosity, how much different is the accuracy, and obviously you can't answer this 100% generally, because devices different, are different, but like from a phone sound meter to one of these professional, is it like, on average, like 10% different for your modern phone, or is it like really very different?
I, I, I can't speak to the exact percentage, a phone may be different than a type 2 or type 1 meter. The, you know, if you put your phone out, it will generally let you, you could obviously see when things get noisy, and like, and it's probably within like the 10-decibel ballpark, 5-decibel ballpark maybe even. The thing is, is you just don't know. And these meters that have these, these type 2, type 1 standards, they get calibrated to like a very scientific, there's calibration labs, so that they're calibrated to this very specific standard, where type 1, I think, is within 1-decibel accuracy. Type 2 is like 2 decibels, it's something like that. And so you know that that meter is within that accuracy, where if you use your phone, it might just be the calibration is essentially off. So like if we take, take our phones out and play the same sound, you'll probably see different levels on all of them.
I mean, the question's more getting at, you know, like if we set the limit at 60 or something like that, and the neighbor pulls out their phone, and it shows roughly 65, or it shows roughly 50, like whether they could feel like, okay, I, I know enough that I should definitely call the police, or I know enough that like, maybe this is all right, kind of thing, just to save police calls potentially.
All right. I wouldn't give any credence to a sound-decibel app on a cellphone.
Yeah, not for enforcement, it's just for like a rule of thumb for the community or something like that, if it was roughly like 5%.
I would, I would, I have no confidence in a microphone on my cellphone.
I know you don't, I was asking our technical expert.
Yeah, I, I think-
Which it seems like he doesn't have exact data on it.
I mean, I, I think, you know, it could give somebody a general idea, but yeah, it's, it's not accurate enough to like rely on that, or have something in the code, or like maybe-
Yeah, of course, not on the code side. It was more like a community rule of thumb, or-
Yeah, yeah. I, but you know, I'll, I'll double-check on that.
Yeah, I'd just be curious, because I know, I think we've seen with Alverno and other places, that folks have like their own sound consultant, or they're reporting something or something like that, so I'm just wondering if we get like a, someone- So I'm just wondering if we get like someone coming up here and saying, oh, my cellphone said seventy, like whether that would be expected to be within, I don't know, five DBs of the truth, ten DBs of the truth are totally off.
Yeah, it's something we could do some research into.
How to interpret public comment, I guess.
You could also get a type two meter for about fifteen dollars, I think, on Amazon.
Yeah, it was more just like how to.
Not for the calibrated ones.
Not for calibrated.
Like, yeah, the, I mean, maybe you could. The cheapest, the meters we use at my company are called Piccolos, they're like four hundred, five hundred bucks.
Right, right, right. I'm just saying, what does our city use? Our city police, do we know?
Do they have them? Are they calibrated? Are they current? I mean, there's lots of, there's lots of questions.
They have a meter.
You get a speeding ticket, right, is it calibrated?
Chair Dennis, I do have one comment that I wanted to follow up with Commissioner Brennan, that with RingCon's contract, we do have a follow-up task after this, is for them to provide recommendations on how to enforce the code, and also recommendation on what device that we, the police department or our co-enforcement office should use.
Yeah, so I would recommend that we not have whatever our next.
That makes sense.
Hearing, or our first reading of the code until we get those recommendations and understand those, and probably with the police chief in concert of that, or having them have met ahead of time so that we understand the enforcement path forward. So I guess with that, were there any definitions that anybody wanted to discuss?
I had one, just, it seemed, most, most everything for like construction, we have hours between seven AM and six PM, except Sundays and holidays, it's ten to six. And then powered equipment is from eight AM to seven PM. I don't know if we're planning, I don't know, we could use hammers at seven and lawnmowers at eight. Is there a reason they're just not kind of the same for simplicity? It's in what's C and?
So we were starting with definitions, are you past definitions?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm past definitions, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I mean, that's definitely something that could be made consistent. I think that's, the existing leaf blower text had, kind of had those hours that were slightly different than the construction, but I see no reason, you're right, like make it simple, right? Yeah, I think that could be.
Yeah, it sounds like general comments are like, for our small city, the simplicity of the code is a virtue.
So then I guess with that said, if there's no definitional stuff, I mean, really, the first thing we're looking at is this chart with the numbers, right? Unless somebody had something before that? So as far as the chart goes, do we think that we want to have these five to ten decibel nuanced thresholds? Or do we think that we want to have just one threshold citywide?
I'm for one, but.
I'm for one as well, I just wonder whether it's sixty or sixty-five, it seems like one of those would make sense.
Yeah, I think one, or at least do the round numbers of fifty, sixty, seventy, or something like that, right? Simplify, so, yeah, I'd be okay with either.
So, I mean, do we want to go to the lowest denominator of the residential?
I think I do have a question for this. If the sixty for seven to ten, and the fifty for ten to seven, is that something that's an average in the cities surrounding us? And also, the question is, is that an average of cities like us? Saritos, or Temple City, again, you know, nothing against cities, they're not up against a mountain kind of in a quiet area. And since we're talking above ambient, is that what you feel would be correct for above ambient in the city?
Yeah, I, you know, so some cities you see for the nighttime, you see forty-five to fifty. So some cities do have forty-five. To be honest, I feel like some big cities have forty-five, some rural cities have fifty. So it's kind of like, cities seem to go either way, essentially. But I, you know, if you're, you could justify, you know, especially up in the hills, you know, it's, there's not, barely any cars and stuff, you know, fifty would probably feel loud to them. But again, I don't know if you, forty-five is low.
Okay.
So as in, you could have violations maybe where you, you know, it starts to be almost like too many, right? Like a little too restrictive, that's why we like fifty.
I don't want to be too restrictive, and that, I'm kind of getting into the outside.
Okay.
Is sixty on the low side or high side?
I would say it's a little above average. Not, I wouldn't call it high, but it's not low. And so average, you see fifty-five to sixty, I would say.
So it's on the generous, as far as being a sound creator?
Yeah, so, yeah, I think in a developed city, you know, that's suburban in nature, that sixty is reasonable.
I would prefer for us, I'm all for simplifying the different land uses potentially. We can talk about that, but I would prefer to see us keep to residential levels for daytime and evening.
Oh, yeah, daytime.
Yeah, I think we were saying, get rid of the different land use types, and reduce to a daytime and a nighttime threshold.
If we said nighttime residential's fifty is still acceptable, it's slightly generous versus forty-five, and residential at sixty is kind of in the average, again, a little bit generous.
Maybe a little generous.
But then we, maybe we norm everything else out to sixty, maybe sixty is our mark for commercial, et cetera, or is that too?
I was thinking that, but I just don't know our downtown commercial area, whether it's.
Yeah, again, it's, yeah, sorry.
Sixty is used for a commercial as well, if it makes things easier to lump commercial and these others, hospitals.
And as recipients.
Yeah, I was actually recommending, so the old code had flat level, just, this is the max at the city. And so I was kind of thinking of reverting to something like that, that there's a citywide standard. So it would be sixty during the day and fifty at night.
Yeah.
With the L-max noise levels at eighty and seventy. And then we don't have to worry, nobody's confused, well, I'm this land use, I'm that land use.
The enforcer is.
I've got a doctor's office here.
If table at, in the morning, and think about, am I the receiver or the generator?
I just don't know that there's that big of a nuance of sound at five decibels between all of these to make it worth. Conflating on the code.
So I think we want fifty, or sixty during the day and fifty at night.
And I guess the time period is challenging, because our code is, I don't know how to harmonize our code, but I would really love if staff would go through and kind of give us guidance on what the different codes are. Another thing I noticed is that hospital, not hospitals, sorry, I was looking at the code. Holidays are just used as a term, but it doesn't specify whose holidays. Is it a federal holiday, a bank holiday, a city holiday? So we might want to define what those holiday days are.
There's in the definitions, it does have holiday. It was in there before, so this language.
Top of page two.
This is from the previous ordinance, we didn't touch it.
Okay, there we go.
Okay, so then we need to make it a defined term the rest of the agreement? Because it was lowercase holiday in many spots, so I assumed it wasn't defined, my mistake. So, yeah, so if we could get some kind of a table or harmonization of those times? Because I think that construction is seven, but then other things are eight. Like I think the powered tools on Saturdays was eight or something. So if we can just get some kind of guidance on harmonization of the times, that would be great.
And is there a preference for which times you would like them aligned with?
Alignment is my preference.
Just any alignment?
So, well, I suspect that there's code for construction that is for like construction permits, and we're always allowed to operate there. And so I would want to make sure that we're not introducing yet another set of guidelines on timing that conflicts with other times. So just a harmonization across the code is what I'm looking for, does that make sense?
Yes.
I think we'll probably, I think if we're good, we'd end up with three times. One would be like the beginning and the end of work, so maybe seven and six, and then like evening, because, you know, for like the sound would be ten, does that seem kind of what you're looking for?
Yeah, what I'm looking for is there's probably code elsewhere that we're not changing as part of this, that says what hours you're allowed to do construction.
Oh, okay, okay.
Like in the permitting or the zoning, and so we should harmonize our noise ordinance with where else it is in other parts of the code.
Okay.
Yeah, like if we said eight AM, and the construction code said you were allowed to start at seven, it would be kind of contradictory.
Right.
So that's, does that make sense?
Yes, and I'd have to review the other code sections to see where that applies, but I understand what you're referring to.
Okay. Otherwise, we're just set ourselves up to, which of these applies, right, which governs?
So if we go to a fifty and sixty, then when you do construction, do you have to get a, I mean, you're going to pull your construction permit. Does that allow you to go beyond the sixty then?
So there are exemptions in nine thirty-two forty for construction?
Fully exempt?
To the eighty, I think it is, to eighty DB or something?
Yeah, eighty DBA. Over an eight-hour period. And maybe we're lucky, and that's the only place that it has hours for permits, but I thought I remembered it was somewhere else.
I think this is the only place that has the hours, and then also on our applications.
Okay. That would be great. So then we'll reduce the noise standards to just those, a daytime and a nighttime period? And get rid of the different land uses for them?
Was there a preference that there's some type of reference in the table itself that this is the recipient? I mean, I guess if it's standardized, that's a little bit less critical.
I mean, could we put that just in the title?
I think in the title, I also prefer that.
This is the recipient, yeah.
In general, I love tables where you can take a screenshot and put it in a PowerPoint without the extra stuff. And so if it has the text there, then it makes sense.
I mean, right above, yes, I'm fine with more explanation. It does literally right above the table in section A, it says that it's measured at the property plane.
I agree, that's just my rule of thumb, like, I don't know, I come from science, and like people want to take a screenshot of your plot and like talk about it in a PowerPoint, and if it doesn't have all the information in the plot, then people have to like go and look it up in the paper and it says it somewhere, so I just always like, you put it in the actual thing, then anyone can take it and use it elsewhere.
And then we can strike F if we're getting rid of the land uses? Anything else before we move on for that section? All right, exemptions is the next one.
One quick question, sorry. Did you want the C, you know, the one that talks about simple tone, impulsive noise? Were you looking to, where it says if those type of land uses, it would be reduced by five decibels? So it's footnote C. Is that something you're looking to keep in, or is that where you want to cut that?
No, I think we're fine, I'm fine with leaving that in there, it's more restrictive, so that's fine. I think that I would ask that you give examples, because I don't think any of us knew what impulsive noise was.
Okay.
So you give an example for the amplifying equipment, so I would include examples for impulsive noise. And if it's not in the simple tone noise definition above, then I would add examples there. It doesn't, I don't care where the examples go, either in the definition or here, but they should be one place or the other. Thank you. All right, so exemptions. In C, if we can get holidays as a defined term? So I'm perplexed by section D in here, because we're basically saying, if you have a permit to do construction, you're allowed to do these in a different set of hours than if you're mowing your lawn.
And this is impulsive only sounds during this time period, is that what this, because I wrote this ahead of. I think this is saying that these are exceptions, and you can have these power equipment intended for repetitive use, but only if it's impulsive, or I think that's what it says, only between eight and seven?
Yeah, so these, I think these hours can be changed to match those other hours as well, just to keep that consistent. These carve-outs, you often see these carve-out basically calling out things like leaf blowers, because they're very, I mean, they're very common sound that people have complaints about. And so this previous, most of this language was in here previously for leaf, to the leaf blower. Through talking with the chief, it was mentioned, things like tree trimmers had come up as well and things like that. So it's just meant to, you know, you have this leaf blower, this machinery used for these purposes that are annoying, to kind of more comprehensively cover that with more examples, essentially. But those hours can definitely be, if there's confusion about why this says, you know, eight AM, and Chuck gets to seven AM, we can make that seven AM to.
A quick question on leaf blowers, is it that gap, is it the case that gas leaf blowers are now banned, and it's only electric leaf blowers? So just something for us to consider, that some of that may already be covered by the fact that electric leaf blowers just aren't that low?
They're not necessarily quieter than gas-powered leaf blowers.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Chair Dennis, I just wanted to note that the city council did pass the ordinance for the landscape equipment, including this section. So I think this section's supposed to refer back to chapter eight point four zero point zero one zero. So if we can make the reference to that, it will align with what the city council approved a year ago.
And, okay, so then can we conform the hours of this section to whatever the city council's code is?
I'm also wondering if we have hours like many places throughout the document, if it ends up being like one standard like day and one standard night, we could define it upfront and then just kind of say what it is, instead of constantly saying between the hours of X and Y. I don't know if it will end up being that standard, but if it is standard, rather than having all these various like, from seven to six, from seven to six, from seven to six, if we just say like, we define day from seven to seven, or.
The only problem to me on that is six to ten, and you don't want, it's not night and it's not construction. I don't, you know, so seven to six is something for like construction or leaf blowers, or seven to ten is daytime.
Yeah, I, like I said, I don't know if it is possible, but if it was, then that would simplify.
So can I just put these into context, right? So for these exemptions, right, section C is saying, construction, permitted construction, has these requirements surrounding them, right? And then the other potential daytime noise-producing thing that I think is pretty common in our residential areas, there's, maybe we don't have gas leaf blowers anymore, but we may have other gas-powered stuff. Or my neighbor's in his shop next door, and his doors are open, and he's not running a home-based business, but he's a crafter, DIY guy, and he's running his sander four hours during the day, right? What we're saying is that's okay based on, right, permitted construction is okay under section, under paragraph C, and under paragraph D, you can do other mechanical noise-producing things, including some of the things I just talked about, as long as you're only operating it in the daytime. So was that saying? And I still have to be under, still have to be under my decibel threshold?
Yeah.
And we're calling that out because it's, because people, because I'm already below my decibel threshold, right? So I'm not exceeding the table. But people may say, a resident may say, hey, that's really annoying that my neighbor runs his power equipment in his shop all day long, he's not running a home-based business, but we're saying actually that's okay.
Yeah, what this section really calls out. Yeah, what I, what this section really calls out is that this type of landscaping equipment, equipment similar to that, don't do it outside of the daytime hours essentially.
Yeah, that, or that, the, it, or other mechanical, electrical device, or any hand tool kind of really opens that up.
Sanders, right?
Yeah, it's a lot of different stuff.
Don't use your tools at night.
Right. Yeah, that would be outside of the, you know, outside of these hours. So like, you know, if you're doing it at noontime, those limits in the table will apply to 60. You know, you still need to meet that at your neighbor's property. But at nighttime, it's, you know, as you read that, that table, it says 50 decibels at night, but this is saying, listen, you still can't do a leaf blower and make it 45 at somebody's house because that's considered an annoyance at nighttime.
And this is also cutting it till 6:00 PM instead of extending 60 dB till 10:00 PM when the, that time changes. So this will stop the sander at 6:00 PM.
You know, this language came from that adoption 15 years ago.
Okay.
So that was, you know, at that time.
Thanks for the clarification. I'm, I'm okay with this, sorry.
So I think we should conform the construction hours and, well, I hate to ask this. I hate to ask this. Are the personal use hours more restrictive than the construction? That, yeah, so when city council passed their code, it's more restrictive to residents than the construction hours. So if I have construction at my house, I can do it starting at seven, but I can't turn my leaf blower on till eight.
That's correct.
Let's just conform section D to the city council code then. Special events. So the recommendation was that these were special events that were city-related only and that the CUPs would govern, or the TUPs would govern sound?
So all the other private property will, like the TUP, they are not exempt?
Right.
Through this exemption section?
I, I think that, I think that's a great recommendation. So I think that we should, if staff would change special events to reflect only the city events and leave the sound for CUPs and TUPs. And I assume that our contract with Athens, Athens specifies that they can start as early as 6:00 AM and that's why it says 6:00 AM in here?
I hear them before seven.
Well, they're allowed, or according to this, they'll be allowed to. So I guess...
I can check with public works regarding the contract.
Yeah, let's find out what that contract says so that we don't put them in violation of the contract that we have with them. In section D, it says short duration, but then up to three months. And I would think that a noise of up to three months, like what would be an example that's not something already contemplated that would need permission from the city To make noise?
Well, like a, a wedding?
For three months? So it says for a duration up to three months. I'm trying to understand the three-month time period. I can, I can get behind a day. I'm trying to understand what wouldn't be covered, or is this just supposed to be a catch-all?
Probably just a catch-all. I mean, maybe filming, I, I imagine don't get to three months for a film.
I think that is their maximum, but that does, that has a whole different process.
Yeah.
With something like the debris basin cleaning?
Construction.
Or...
Or emergency.
Emerg, I mean, because the debris basin...
Yeah, there's a lot of trucks for that.
We both live like inches from that.
Yeah, that's all being done as part of emergency remediation, right?
Yeah, but I mean, maybe it's like something akin to that, not exactly that, but like...
You know, something where I see these exception permits sometimes is with nighttime construction, where maybe say you're doing a pipeline in the road and there's an intersection that you just can't block off during the day. So they just do it at nighttime. So there's often variances or exceptions for those projects that go through this process to allow them to, you know, make that noise at nighttime.
Like we're, we're running late on the library construction and decide to like, let them construct at night or something.
So is this something that would be publicly noticed?
Yes, so once the draft is ready, we will have to advertise on the newspaper, the local newspaper.
Not, not the draft of this. Would this section that we're looking at for a, an, a city, city manager approval to make noise for up to three months at a time, is that subject to public notice? This whole section?
So the, we, we haven't decided on the application process for this, if that's something that needs to be publicized and...
I would, I would recommend, because we have very clear delineation for everything else. So I would recommend that this is something that needs to be publicly noticed.
You mean like if someone is applying for a waiver?
Whoever's applying for this exception.
Says like, I intend to do night construction.
Yep.
And I've applied to do that kind of thing.
Right. Yeah, because we have pretty well laid out process for everything else and this is kind of our catch-all. So it seems like it should be publicly noticed. With whatever the standard appeals process is that conforms to everything else. Looks like the next section is, sorry, is there anything else on that one? 932070, prohibited noises. So I gotta be honest, I'm not a fan of this 15 minutes measurement time period. I think that if you all of a sudden crank up a song, by the time you call for enforcement and enforcement gets there and they have to wait 15 minutes, I mean, it feels like an excessively long period that you could be subjected to noise without any kind of penalty. So I, I think, I, what is the shortest period that you generally see?
Uh, like, like I mentioned earlier, the Caltrans, they say like 10, 30 minutes for their measurements, but they're specifying when they're measuring traffic, which is a little bit of a consistent noise source.
Yeah.
You know, I think, I would say 10 minutes, but also I, I think if you're still concerned about that, you know, if we're comfortable with maybe conform, like leaving it up to, you know, the discretion of the person in the field for them grabbing a representative sample of the violation, something like that maybe.
Or changing it from average to peak? Because the time period becomes, so the challenge I'm having is that if you have seven minutes and 29 seconds over and seven minutes and 31 seconds under, you're saying that the average noise at that time period is below the peak.
Well, it depends when it's under and when it's over, like how much it goes over and under, right? So like, the way noise works, so say I'm measuring for 15 minutes, if there's one minute that's super, that's pretty loud and the rest of the 14 minutes are quiet, it'll come up with a high reading still. Because the way that noise energy works, you know, like I said, like 70 decibels is way more energy than 50 decibels. So if you have one minute of that way more energy, your average over, your noise energy averaged over 15 minutes is probably like 65.
So is average energy not average decibel?
Yeah, right? So like if, if you're really loud for, if you're at 70 decibels for seven and a half minutes, 50 decibels for the next seven and a half minutes, 60 decibels is not what your result's going to be. It's going to be like 67, 68 because of the way that the noise energy works. So I think your concern there, I think that would be captured, I, I don't think that would be, I think that would be captured by, because of this way that noise is averaged.
Okay.
Yeah.
But I mean, we could do 10 minutes if that helps a little bit.
I mean, my concern was almost the opposite, that someone arrives and like the noise is fine exactly when they arrive and there's like a three-minute reading the person takes and it's fine, whereas the overall party, the next song comes on and it's oon, 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 where if it's a little longer, you'll capture more what the neighbors are capturing, which is, you know, what they're hearing over time kind of thing. You don't want to make it so long that the enforcer has to sit there for an hour, but you don't want to make it so short that it's really easy to avoid the enforcement kind of thing. Oh, the neighbor's just called the cops, let's turn the music down and turn it right back up after five minutes or whatever.
The, the way it's written, it's for at, you know, duration of at least 15 minutes. So I think the person in the field would have the discretion, if they feel like they didn't capture the source because it turned off for that period, but it's going to turn back on again. They could totally...
They could do it for longer.
Do it for longer, yeah.
But it also means that like it forces our enforcement to, you know, you have to go somewhere in the middle of the night. Sometimes you just want to get back home or go back to your cozy station, you know, like if it's just two minutes, they take the reading, oh, it's fine, and then you go back and then you get another call or whatever. Like if it's long enough, then you really are taking the complaint seriously.
15 minutes for a police officer to record noise is quite a long time.
Yeah, well, we could also reduce it. Like, I just meant like...
That's the, I, I'm just thinking of the, in the enforcement side of it, I mean...
We'll talk to the chief.
Yeah, we'll see. Yeah, like I, I would be open to reducing it, but there is an argument to having it not be too short.
I agree.
And then I, the DBC being over ambient is, I know there's not a ton of research, it sounds like.
But I, I think it's something we could look more into.
That would be great.
Yeah, even if it's a ballpark, I think that could be like better than nothing.
I totally get the concern that you brought up, so we'll, I'll take a deep dive into it.
Okay.
Especially given our direction to kind of like simplify things and we don't have to get it like exactly, exactly right, but if it gets close to...
There might be a way to like convert DBA to DBC and then we can kind of take that 60 number and put it in DBC. So you have a straight number. We'll see, but there's probably something out there.
932090, vibration?
I, I, um, this seems like a catch-all to me for something we can't quantify because we can't measure it.
It says right there, if a police officer walks in your lot, in your living room and sees something moving, that is a vibration.
I, I noticed in your notes though, you, you made a comment, or in the, in the review notes, that there's ways to make this more quantitative, but it might become overly...
Well, so that's where if it, if you make quantitative...
I'm not in favor of that, but so...
Yeah, so like, so the vibration decibels, 72 vibration decibels is kind of maybe a standard limit here, but then that required to enforce that does require having a vibration meter, which again, they're not, you know, you might never really need one. And it just, I don't know if the city would want to invest in something they just like would never use. Whereas this, I realize this is, you know, I don't know if it's legally just that distinctly perceptible, but it's, it's, this is something, the way this is written is where a person, you know, an officer could make that judgment without having a meter.
Yeah, a reasonable person could conclude that this is happening and so...
So that's kind of why I'm okay with it.
My, my only qualm with having it be tied to a normal person is on the...
Well, I'm not, I'm not sugge, I'm not, from a legal perspective, I'm not sug, I'm saying I'm okay with this language. I'm just, I don't, it is a catch-all, but I think it's okay to be a catch-all, so.
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm not suggesting, sorry, I used legal terms, I shouldn't have said that in front of a lawyer.
No, and I think that is what was based on, of like the legal standard of a reasonable person.
Yeah, yes, I know, I know.
And I think that in this situation, that might be problematic only in that a complainant would claim that they're the normal person in any situation and then there's really not, there's too much discretion perhaps?
Yeah.
But I don't have a suggestion for how to...
To rectify.
Rectify that at this time, so.
Okay.
But if you're meeting the noise standards and your plates are rattling on your shelf, this is a catch-all for that, I, I think, right? Is there a difference between a normal person and a reasonable person? Normal just seems like a strange word to me.
932100.
It's beyond our purview.
Penalties, anything on that or violations? All right, do you have questions about the guidance we've given tonight, staff?
I don't have any question. I think we have clear direction.
Okay. Okay. Great. Look forward to seeing the fruits of that labor. All right, next up, we have California Legislative Updates Part Three. Is that still happening?
I will give this in lieu of Alex's absence and any ambiguities will be resolved in writing after this meeting.
I actually have to step away and leave, so I guess we'll leave Patrick here to, to finish the meeting.
If there is a preference, do this at another meeting.
I think we have a pretty busy meeting coming up, don't we? Or do we not, do we have a busy agenda next week or in two weeks?
So for the next meeting, we will hear from the Meadows. It's a annual report. It's a consent item on, you know, the status of their plan check and their Semedo and also the future dates for construction. And then if we were able to, we will bring back the revision to the noise ordinance update and that's all I have for the next meeting.
I'm open to holding this to the next meeting if that's what you guys would prefer to do.
I have my board meeting for the nursery school.
Yeah, as long as the next one's not crazy, yeah.
Okay. Then I will, actually, it's just a discussion item, we can, we don't have to vote to, to continue it, correct? Okay. All right, Planning Commission reports. Planning and Community Preservation Department reports.
That was the report that was given, thank you.
All right, then I guess we will adjourn to our next regularly scheduled meeting on May 1st.